Mark Aliff is a Republican. Mark Aliff is the general manager at Vindmar Honda Motors. So he's the general manager at Vindmar Honda Motors. He's been in the car business for 28 years. So actually, I hope this campaign has helped with his sales out, right? This is publicity, free publicity, man. Every time they mention his name and they mention where he works, Vindmar Honda Motors. Vinda Honda Motors. Go to Vinda Honda Motors. Well, you might get a good deal or not, I don't know. But yeah, you've got a politician and a car dealer, right? So a car dealer, politician, all you need is a lawyer now, and then you'll have a trifecta, an algonquin trifecta. So don't vote for Dennis Flores. His position on Petco is absolutely wrong when it comes to Mark Aliff. What's his position on Petco?
I'm going to talk about that later, but let's talk about jobs. What do you see as the future jobs for Pueblo?
Well, I think the jobs, obviously, I support Petco, and I support their mission. I support the tax that we pay into that entity. I believe that they have done very well in the past in creating jobs. I hear a lot of complaints that they're not high-paying jobs, and they're bringing in call centers that, you know, with minimum wage and things like that. But you've got to take some of those with some of the others, obviously. One of the problems about job recruitment is the community itself. Our reputation of a crime-ridden community with auto thefts, drug abuse, things like that, and the press that we get on that, obviously are a hindrance to major employers.
Oh, okay, so Mark Aliff is opposed to Petco. Oh my God. Forgive me, I know not what I do. I'm actually more defensive about my Mark Aliff vote than my Charlotte Perez vote. Charlotte Perez is hands-down a progressive. She is a progressive, lots of, she's going to solve homelessness with contour crafting. She is going to go work on waste-to-electricity programs like they're doing in Sweden. Only less than 1% of Sweden's garbage end up in landfills. So Sweden has 32 of these plants, and they're actually buying trash from other countries. They're running out of trash in Sweden. They don't have enough trash in Sweden. But just think of that, less than 1% of all the trash ends up in landfills. So Charlotte Perez is a progressive. Perez had voted against all the ballot measures. So Charlotte Perez voted against all the ballot measures. Mark Aliff voted against all the ballot measures. Charlotte Perez is in favor of contour crafting. He seemed like he might be partial to it. She's in favor of solar trees. He seems like he might be partial to solar trees. Where they'll work very well, and will be on Black Hills. When it comes to forging a new path with Black Hills, he's opposed to it. She's opposed to it. So they would work well on Black Hills. They would also work well with a charter convention. They, you know, with a charter convention, so we could actually rewrite this, a brand-new charter. And so with Josh Brunns. So Josh Brunns wants to end homelessness with contour crafting. Him and Charlotte would be great on that. But Mark Aliff's policy on Petco, on homelessness, and then he was even accused of being a homophobic bigot to Mark Aliff to address my concerns, and he essentially told me enough, he told me enough, to where he was able to win over my vote. So Dennis Flores, he's Mr. Petco. He's Mr. Sierra Club Principal. He's a Sierra Club environmentalist, which means more landfills and more methane. Mr. US Bank, Mr. Local Conservative Establishment, Mr. Local Conservative Democrat, Mr. Let the Voters Decide on Big Daddy Strange. Dennis Flores is wrong when it comes to the strong mayor. Mark Aliff was right, and he's still right. Big Daddy Strange, immunity for all the city employees, taking away the constitutional revolutionary quality of our charter, putting our sovereignty, our home rule status, is hanging in the balance. Our very sovereignty, our very city. Are we just an administrative unit of the state? Are we just going to give up on this home rule experiment with the strong mayor?
Truly don't know this. What has Petco brought in, or what have they been working on?
Well, it's hard to tell what they're working on because they have to stay fairly quiet on that.
Oh, okay. Why? I'm all about transparency, but I guess...
I understand that, I understand that. But in the negotiation process with companies, a lot of that has to stay hush-hush until they get to the point where they want to announce that they want to come here. So you don't know how many, how many people, you and I don't know. I would know if I was on city council who they're talking to, but...
But how do we, how do we get around the issue? So we're bringing in these jobs, okay? Let's say they're minimum wage. We don't have bus service after 6 o'clock in Pueblo. So these are the kinds of things. How do we expect young families who maybe have to work at these jobs to get home if they don't have a car, can't afford insurance, or...
Aliff's perspective on Petco still sucks. It still sucks. Here's what I want Mark Aliff to think about. The one thing I learned about Mark, with Mark Aliff on Petco, is that we're trying to increase exports. We're trying to increase exports with Petco, but it's not all for, he said that there were some call centers. What are we exporting with call centers? So it doesn't seem like it's all for exports. It just seems like you just can't use it for yourself. Now, the exports thing means that there's a Milton Friedman economic theory behind the, you know, Petco. Petco is a fucking behemoth, and I need to actually research this thing so I know really what I'm talking about. But it's a tax in order to help with job recruitment. They are so scared that it's going to get eliminated, they quit calling it Petco. Peter Roper doesn't call it Petco anymore. He calls it the half-cent tax for job recruitment.
So there's a lot of, you know, if we're going to promote Pueblo as a manufacturer-type city, I mean, look at what happened with the Spreis scripts, right? We had 370 jobs just disappear.
Just gone.
So how do we, how do we avoid tax credit haven for a company to come in and then make sure that they are here for the long term and for the right reasons?
You know, how do you do that? There, I mean, you can't, if a, if a company wants, if they go out of business, they file bankruptcy, they shut their doors, or they just leave, and because their business is not, not good enough to support this location, they're going to leave. And I don't know, I don't believe that there's anything that you can put in place to change that.
Would you support using some of the Petco money for entrepreneurs and local businesses? Because I know they have some strict guidelines that don't always fit, but, you know, would you be in favor of supporting and keeping young people here that maybe want to start up a business or something?
Well, obviously, I'm about economic development because I'm in the retail business. If, if people aren't here working, then I'm not successful. So that's very important to me. Petco does do things that with local businesses. If you look at what they did with Grady's just not too long ago.
Four out of the five ballot measures are for totalitarian, right-wing dictatorship fascism. Fascism, straight up. I was trying to figure out, are we more of a socialist country, a capitalist country? We do both of these things, you know, horrible. We are not good capitalists. If we were good capitalists, you would see marijuana gardens in everybody's yard. If we were good capitalists, if we were good capitalists, prostitutes wouldn't shock us. If we were good capitalists, let the free market decide. Well, wait a second. I thought you were all about being capitalist and letting the free, oh, you just mean the big corporate Monsanto behemoths, not the small, your neighbors, right? Not your next-door neighbors, but go ahead and let Monsanto run roughshod on everybody. Four of the five ballot measures are right-wing totalitarian dictatorship violent status fascist measures. There's, Aliff is good with numbers, he's good with math. Mark Aliff saw the common sense idea of a trash incinerator on its face immediately upon hearing about it, like, holy shit, why, yeah, why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we get rid of 87% of our trash? Growing up on a farm, we all burnt the trash out there, so, oh, that's not a big deal. And I think that there's, you know, I definitely know that there's ways to lower the smoke. So four out of five ballot measures are right-wing totalitarian shitty fucking measures. The Big Daddy Strange, it's tyranny, the cops, the jails, and then what's the other one? The cops, the jails, the strong mayor, so that's four. There's two cop measures, there's one jail measure, there's the tyranny of the strong mayor. Only the, you know, street repair tax is seemingly not fascist. Four...
The way Petco is set up, the business has to be able to export their goods out of the community. So what they've started to do is work with local companies who have the ability to produce and export their, their goods, and try and help them. The problem with Petco right now is that nobody in the community knows that. They're doing that, but yet they're not telling people that they're doing it. Grady's is a good example, where you heard about it, and everybody said, oh, that, that sounds great. There's another 45 jobs, hopefully, within the next five years.
Well, and Big R, what did they get, 4 million, or was it...
Right.
Understands that the marijuana industry is here to stay, so Dennis Flores and him are on the same page when it comes to that. Flores says, let's, you know, pay attention to heroin. Flores was for 2B, the infinite tax. So Dennis Flores was for increasing fascism. Mark Aliff counts this in anti-tax terms, but still, nonetheless, whatever reason, he wants to not vote for these ballot measures is okay with me. You want to save some money? That's the reason you don't want more fascism? Then let's save some damn money. Hell, yeah. Hell, yeah. So he's against all the ballot measures, which enables other people to, one man with courage makes the majority, so it allows other people to voice their opposition and to voice their questions to all these ballot measures. He's right when it comes to the waste-to-energy program. He's to Petco, he, Mark Aliff says he's the principled conservative, so if that's the case, then the essential services. He says the charter says that we should only provide for essential services. Essential services such as poster stores, essential services such as private corporations who just take our damn money and then laugh in our faces? How's Petco essential services? We do need jobs. Without a job, we all die, so jobs, it's not a constitutional requirement, but since the people need jobs in order to live, of course, that should be one of the main jobs of a politician, to provide gobs and gobs of jobs. So of course we need more jobs. And just with Petco, he says, he mentions that they're not high-paying jobs, and they're getting call-in centers with minimum wage. That's not increasing exports. What are we doing with this?
I'm not sure of the amount, but...
Right. And I think that money's there for that use, and I believe that if there's somebody that wants to start a business here that, that can prove to Petco that, that they're viable and, and can produce a product.
So in your opinion, then, the 200, the quarter of a million dollars that was budgeted for them is, is worthwhile?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. So then, let's talk about the infrastructure which you hit on, because that was a big thing. When you're out talking to people, that always comes up, our roads, you know?
Roads and public safety. For 20 years, the, the city does the community surveys, and every year that it comes back, nobody does anything about it.
The city of Taco Lot, I call...
...conversation, he said he was against eminent domain, so he was against sort of taking people's property, but I mentioned that they get paid a fair market value. So if they get paid a fair market value, right, whose market value? But if it's a fair way, you know, if it's fair like the market, and it's for a public service, that's the whole point of the power of eminent domain. We're going to put some power lines in, we're going to put a sewer in, we're going to pave this street right here, so we need to take your land. Sorry, but here's a paycheck, you know, and go on your way. He said he's absolutely against eminent domain. But I did mention that they get paid a fair market value, and he kind of was like, you know, he thought about it. And then, he says that he wants less, less government, just the essential services. Well, what about municipal golf? So just make sure that, for Mark Aliff, don't just get socialism for the rich. Municipal golf? His response to that was he likes to play golf. Oh, well, if it's a fun, fun game for Mark Aliff, let's make sure we subsidize municipal golf. Why don't we turn that fucking golf course into the homeless park? You know, when Lake Avenue shut that homeless shelter down, they should have been, you know, they should be culpable. There should be the shelter being put some other place. Now there's no shelter. So for every person that freezes to death this winter, that's on your conscience, Pueblo City. You let people stay out in the cold. You didn't give a damn. They're freezing out in the cold, just like the Okies and the Tom Joad and the Grapes of Wrath. So municipal golf is not an essential service. Petco, who can't even get us a grocery store, that's not an essential service. You want job recruitment, then we should be able to get not just exports, but you know what? They export to our own fucking people. If you want to think of it like that, produce the fucking services, food. He's a car dealership, car dealership man. He's not producing anything. He's not producing exports, and that means he wouldn't get any of that Petco money. So he should understand that, but he's offering an important service, right? Don't we need vehicles in order to drive here and there? So to offer food, I mean, food, water, clothing, shelter. These are Maslow's bottom basic needs for human beings. Food, water, clothing, shelter. They're going to get their shelter in jail anyways, why don't we, you know, not incentivize them being criminals by building a brand-new pristine 315 fucking million-dollar prison at 30,000 houses? 30,000 houses! Goddamn, up to almost 30% of Pueblo would have free two-story eight-room house. Free!
...and we have medicinal marijuana. Just keep, talk a little bit about what you feel and...
Obviously, the community wants it. There's no doubt about that. So as an elected official, I would have to live up to, to, to supporting what my constituents support. As far as the city goes, it's relatively new, the retail sales within the city. So there's not much of a track record of any effect or, or any reports or anything that, that myself or anybody else could point to to say, this is good, this is bad, this is not, whatever. So I, I fully support the marijuana industry. They're, they're here, they're going to stay, and I believe that they're a viable part of our economy now, and need to be accepted as that.
Well, it's created jobs. My understanding is that we have a very low unemployment rate.
...to Petco. Mark Aliff is wrong on Petco. We've got to look at him on homelessness. We've got to keep on him when it comes to, you know, municipal golf and hypocrisy, just the essential services. Golf is not an essential service whatsoever fucking ever. Neither is opera. Opera is not an essential service. Wifi is an essential service, and I do believe in net neutrality. I asked him if he understood that cops can sometimes do wrong, because Republican conservatives want to pretend as if as soon as you put on a uniform and a badge, you don't do any wrong whatsoever. So I asked him if he would look into it, if he would investigate that. You're not going to support murderers, are you? And he did, you know, reluctantly say, no, I guess not. And then he understands too, errors the human. So putting on a badge and a uniform doesn't stop people from making errors, and also it actually enables corruption. So we need to watch out. Talk about Grady's and L3 dogs. We're doing this Sperry Corporation fucking bullshit. We're still doing this Sperry Corporation bullshit. Give them millions of dollars, they pocket it, and then say, fuck you, Pueblo City. Millions of dollars. Millions of dollars. Our priorities are totally in the wrong fucking spot. Food, water, clothing, shelter. There's people that don't have shelter. That should be our priority number one. Especially, I mean, good thing for global warming, it's still warm here, it's November, but when it comes to December, January, February, maybe we could just do that, just keep on polluting, so that way we don't have a winter anymore. I called him a Republican piece of shit. Mark Aliff is just easy to talk to. He's easy to talk to, he's approachable, he wants my vote. So he wanted to talk to me, and I jokingly was like, ah, you Republican piece of shit, and he laughed about it. I mean, that's a nice candidate. That's, I mean, he took it exactly as I intended, not, you know, just Josh...
...empower our teachers, support the teachers, you know, the administration, you know, I don't know all the red tape they, they have to deal with, but, but I would be hopeful to see that, you know, this new school board that's going to be elected, I really hope that they can really focus on supporting the teachers who are in the classrooms, in the trenches. They're the ones who see these children every day. They understand what the children are going through, both positive and negative, and that the teachers can, can do more to teach to that particular student and...
Right, when it comes to legal marijuana, he actually said it's part of our viable economy right now. So all these older men, Dennis Flores was right about marijuana, too. It actually almost doesn't even seem like it's that courageous. Everybody's for it. I've heard nobody say they were opposed to it. The chief and they asked a question whether or not, you know, the, if they're for criminalization or decriminalization, and so they were still on the fence about it, but the three ballot measures last year, which one of them was 55 to 45, by the skin of their chinny-chin-chin, did marijuana stay legal here last year? Plus, there's 10 ballot measures and all this, so there was like too much fucking democracy last year, and now there's very few decisions. But that was intentional. If they, you just give the people few decisions, perhaps they might go with your jail, perhaps they might go with your water bill tax in order to get street repairs. Petco is not an essential so, social service. Socialism to... For Mark Aliff, okay? Full disclosure, I voted for Mark Aliff, and, but still with reservations, right? He was good with the ballot measures, he was good with the waste-to-energy program, he was right with the, you know, big strong mayor. He was absolutely right about that. He knew the charter. He knew the charter better than any of these other, you know, so-called establishment figures. And so he was also very easy to talk to, so I might have let the relationship coat some of this, but this is my way of making up for it. We need to look out for his homophobic bigotry. We need to look out for his corporatism, his socialism for the rich. Golf is not an essential service, Mark Aliff. It is not an essential service. So if you're going to finance municipal golf, then to finance, you know, wifi or trash, municipal wifi or trash, you're also considering municipal electricity. So if we're going to own our own electric company, so it seems like...
Bring up that they support, that they then go to try and fulfill. Instead, it's just rubber stamping everything that comes through to them. That's what it feels like to me. It's like, where's the vision of where Pueblo needs to be in the future, and what are we doing? Where's the plan to get there?
Government's responsibility, Sid, government's responsibility is to, to ensure that the, the basic services that you pay your taxes for are met. You know, it, it's, it's not for a lot of the other things that we go off on these rabbit trails and, and, and support. It's, it's, we need to get it back to basics, and like you said, we have to have a vision.
Completely against having a government hand in there. He says that, he said that in this article or in this thing, but if he's in favor of municipal golf when it comes to getting rid of Black Hills Energy, do we need to do municipal electricity? He was in favor of that. And what does he think about municipal water? I think there should be a hand. They shouldn't be the only hand. They shouldn't be a monopoly, but they should be a player in the game to prevent price gouging of everybody else. And then plus, government, I would, I like government services. So if the government just said, okay, we're doing municipal trash, I would rush to get that municipal trash, and I would hope that they would use my money and the money that they make from it to increase recycling centers, to get the waste-to-energy facilities such as what they got in Grand Junction, to invest in these things. We've got to recycle, reduce, reuse, and we need to recover the energy. So let's get all the energy that we can get. So reduce, reuse, recycle, and recover. We need to recover that energy. He got me on board with his, his homelessness policy sucks, and he was rightfully booed at that debate, and then the Ayesha Yuren was rightfully, or wrongfully not booed for actually having a worse homelessness policy than Mark Aliff. Mark Aliff's homelessness policy absolutely sucked. Now, I talked to him, and he made me feel a little bit better about something. So he was saying that he's like principally against eminent domain. I don't know if he knew about the people getting a fair market value, but he was saying he was against, we actually have broad condemnation powers. So I think it's a lot easier than what everybody is saying around here. But he says principally he's against eminent domain, and he also doesn't want to just give a bunch of people free shit, a bunch of free handouts. But I said, what about the 1,000 homeless kids? There's 1,000 homeless kids here in Pueblo City. They're local, they're right here, maybe the parents are deadbeats, but he said that he was against eminent domain. He did say that perhaps we could buy a building, perhaps we could buy people out. So it seems like he just wants the owner to have a choice of being bought out. I personally think that if that piece of property isn't giving any kind of social service, it's not helping the society whatsoever fucking ever, fuck that absentee landlord. They bought that land, they bought that house, they left it ablide, now it's, you know, attracting all the fucking transients, you know, so-called transients. Jason Muniz would have been the other person that I would have voted for if it wasn't for Mark Aliff. Jason Muniz mentioned a homeless shelter. With Jason Muniz, I knew, or at least felt more confident about getting a homeless shelter than what I did with Mark Aliff. The two things Mark Aliff that said that changed my mind was that he said we could get a building. We can get a building, pick a building, we buy the building, or if we already own the building, that's where we home the house, you know, house the homeless. They don't have any shelter, they need to fucking shelter. Other thing that Mark Aliff said that he was in favor of was straight up, he likes new technology. He likes the waste-to-energy program, he likes, he probably likes my math skills. So I was just basically saying the jail's $315 million if you build houses, and I went ahead and, you know, figured it all out. 30,000 houses is what we could produce. $10,000 homes. So a contour crafting machine is $200,000. We should invest in a contour crafting machine. We could become a model city, just like the legalization of marijuana. When you jump on these new emergent industries, the technology, it just, it seems fine, and the guy, it's, you know, relatively new. It's going to be fully functional in 2020. But $200,000 to get one of these machines, and then $10,000 worth of materials, and then we see if it works. If it does, we could produce cheap-ass houses for lots of people. Mark Aliff is on board with that. He's in...
And last year, I saw in the budget of this year that Petco got a quarter of a million dollars, and are they doing what the people of Pueblo are paying them to do, because it's coming from tax-based dollars? Is the, is the bank for the buck there?
The potential for the bank for the buck is there. I, I see a model that if it was, if it's executed appropriately, because it's designed, Petco, the way I understand Petco, it's designed to take taxpayer dollars and invest in businesses that, particularly in infrastructure, to help the infrastructure of, of a large business or at least a business that's going to have high-paying wages, to pay for the infrastructure of, of the businesses that brings quality-paying jobs to Pueblo, Colorado. We actually enjoy a very low unemployment rate right now, but most of our jobs are minimum wage, and unfortunately, people have to work two, three minimum wage jobs just to pay their bills, and, you know, that doesn't account for entertainment, but...
Completely say that he was going to house all the homeless. In fact, when it comes to, you know, he basically, he did reverse course. He did say that he's now in favor of homelessness. I flipped on 300, a couple of them flipped on the street repair tax. So I don't know, you evolve, right? You think about an issue, you look at it a different way, and then you evolve. So I will commend Mark Aliff for that. He evolved. He is in favor of cheap housing for the worthy, for the worthy, for the local folks, for the people, the families, the, not the drug addicts, but I will give a conservative argument for that here in a second, but not for the drug addicts, just for the local families, for the local people, and definitely for the kids. The parents could be deadbeats, but what did the children do? Now, the conservative argument for getting the houses to the heroin addicts, you can have a homeless town, and then you can have like the heroin town, the addict town, and so you could...
So I think it's designed to do that, and, you know, one, one quality example of Petco would be the Grady's restaurant supply story that came out recently, where it's this organic Pueblo business that wanted to start reaching out, and so they went to Petco. Petco reviewed their, their plan, and it was designed for Grady's to expand, but to bring money from outside of Pueblo in.
You want to have this homeless town, you want it to work, and so you want to deputize some of the folks, and you want to make sure that the police have, there's a heavy police presence just to make sure there's no fucking bullshit happening. I mean, it's going to be homeless, right? So you're going to have some mental illness and some other shit you're going to have to deal with. But have one place where, for the worthy, so it can be nice and pristine, and then one not-so-great place, maybe just give them that building for the heroin addicts. But the building is still downtown. I'm talking about outskirts, and I'm talking about getting them their own houses. And the conservative argument for that is that you get them off the streets. You get them off the streets, you're giving them a chance, right? Clean you up, we give you a house, and you're still fucking up. So in the heroin town, you can have the medical doctor making sure, you know, all the fucking needles are going to be out of parks, so you actually solve the damn thing by giving a shit about people. And it's cheaper compared to this jail bullshit. It's actually cheaper to build a bunch of houses.
So that's, that only contributes, then, it's, what the word's called, but that helps our economy significantly when dollars from other communities come in to... Pueblo.
Which is why they want companies that export their goods.
Right. Now, I think there's, um, personally, I feel there's a transparency issue with, with Petco and, and where these dollars, where they're really going. Um, so, you know, as a taxpayer, uh, I, I would like to maybe have a little better idea of, uh, how my dollars are being executed to recruit these jobs.
Mm-hmm.
You know, likes his name and his namesake and his legacy. So when I told him about solar trees, you know, a solar tree is a forty-five thousand dollar investment, but it's a, it's a solar tree, right? So essentially it's just a, a construction, it looks like a tree, uh, and it has solar panels on all the different leaves. And the, they have a lot of outlets. So it encourages people to plug in their outlets and their cell phones and to charge their stuff up. So a forty-five thousand dollar solar tree, which I wanted one for Ricky Muniz, I don't know if this damn church, they have all these goat heads all over their damn parking lot. It would be nice to have a solar tree right there. Have a solar tree, the Brun's Principle, increase the walkability of the area, crime will go down because there's more eyes, there's more ears. And a solar tree, it's just fucking badass. You wanna encourage people to come here? We need to have a high standard of living. You wanna encourage these, uh, the wives of CEOs to come here? Well, solar-
And are we looking at where?
Well, and, you know, from what I understand, the, the qualifications or, or the different levels of accreditation that the charter schools and their employees have is, is vastly different from what the public school system, system has.
Solar trees make the entire city of Pueblo look like Riverwalk. Or it looks like we got the remnants of Riverwalk. So why not put like ten of these things all around for the damn, you know, uh, three hundred, that's thirty-six million dollars, thirty-six million dollars. So I'm talking about a forty-five thousand dollar investment. So just take one million dollars, forty-five, it's about what, two? So you can get twenty of these solar trees for one million dollars. We're gonna have thirty-six million dollars for the, you know, all the new police. So if you took one million dollars, you would get twenty of these trees. And then once you put them, you plant them, they're solar powered. They stay powered forever. It's a cheap investment, makes us look good, makes us look cool, makes all Pueblo City look like Riverwalk. And so it's good for us, right? It gives us confidence that's us landing on the moon. So now what else can we accomplish? And for outsiders, they might think that we actually know what the fuck is going-
Yeah, because of that.
Let's talk about the last issue here, which is a big one, and that's the marijuana issue in Pueblo. Um, the citizens have voted it in. And, uh, we have retail and medical. And I'm just asking the candidates, what's your view on the medical marijuana and should it be taxed?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. And I, I mean, the voters have approved it twice now, uh, and it's, it's, it's here. And the industry is here, uh, whether some of us will like it or not. Um, I, I, I think that we need to ensure regulations, make sure that, um, the industry is, is well regulated. And, and those regulations are being enforced. Just like any business, I, I want the businesses to play by the rules. And, uh, and yeah, I, I think there's, the tax, the, the tax dollars, uh, that come in should be, um, put into the general fund. I think that, you know, on the medical, on the medical side, uh, medical cannabis, uh, is, does tremendous things for so many people. You know, the pharmaceutical companies are designed, for the most part, they're, they're corporations, to be honest with you. And oftentimes, all a corporation is interested in is, you know, their bottom line.
Profits.
So that's how I got on board of the Aliff train, the Mark Aliff train. So when it comes to Petco, his position sucks, but Jason Muniz, he's the one that coins the term transients, this little fucking garbage, these transients, these savages, right? Once you put a fucking label on something, then you can genocide them. And so I don't like how we talk about the homeless and the prostitutes and the heroin addicts, they're people. He also mentioned that he had a steep learning curve and it sounds like he doesn't really know what to do and what's going on. He had very few ideas, very few ideas. He talked about wifi. He had mentioned the homeless shelter, but he also said a bunch of Republican shit right before the homeless shelter, uh, promise. And then he's for an opera. Is that what we need right now? Let's go to the homeless people and ask them, you think right now what you need with the winter coming up is an opera house? Maybe to live inside the opera house?
The profits. And that's why they push, you know, a lot of their pharmaceutical medications. Um, this is, this is natural. Oftentimes, it's organic. And, uh, in, in the right circumstances, it can do tremendous, uh, medical benefits for, for patients. And, and for that, I absolutely support that. Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, I, I don't know, it's not really taxed or it's taxed very low-
I was gonna say, where is the money going? People were wondering, is it being taxed and-
Now, uh, I got Mark Aliff on board with solar trees. I said, what about your legacy? Put it on, you know, let's have the Mark Aliff solar tree. So we put your name on this thing, a thousand years from now, that solar tree is still sitting there and they'll look at it and be like, God, Mark Aliff was ahead of his time. Mark Aliff knew what was going on and put Pueblo City on the map. Made us look like we know what's going on and encouraged all these super progressive corporations to come here and, you know, um, give organic and good jobs. Portland, basically turned Pueblo City into Portland, a nice biking town with high standards of living and, uh, lots of, you know, technology and information industries. That's how I got him on board with these solar trees. So Jason Muniz is pro-Petco. He mentioned Grady's. Kevin Cover mentioned it too. So he's pro-Petco. He just mentioned the shelter and he talks about transients like they- So his civil, uh, silver tongued devil tree worked on me. His abandoned buildings position sucks too. So the homelessness thing, he's in favor of a few homes, building outright, cheap homes for a few of the worthy families and kids, the local folks. Not the people coming in and just, you know, being fucking doped up on heroin all day long and the people that wanna live outside, but the people that actually wanna change their lives and, you know, um, local folks, definitely the one thousand kids, the one thousand homeless kids. I don't know where Taylor Voss got that number from, but essentially they're couch surfing. They need a home. They need a home. They need one spot for their desk. They need one spot for their bed. They need to have some peace of mind and some security. They should not worry about anything else in school until they have a fucking home. And I guarantee if you actually got those kids thinking about homelessness, they would solve it. They would solve it.
Really, if we educated the kids, the youth on the, the, the issues surrounding both, wouldn't that be a better way to use the money?
I, I think that there's always gonna be, you know, uh, factions of, of our community who are going to be against something for, you know, any reason or, or another. And under the First Amendment, they, they have that right. Um, but I think, you know, collectively as a whole, I, I, I think that education, particularly on, on substances, I think that being effective at educating to our younger people, um, will, will ultimately help them make, make the right decisions.
I actually enjoyed Janet Wilson's entire series too. Uh, she was pushing, basically she don't like Petco and then she's pushing to having these abandoned buildings converted. It is common sense. It absolutely is common sense. Yeah, we need to respect private property, but these motherfuckers don't have homes or any private property to speak of. With the jail, we're gonna be fucking housing them in goddamn jail anyways. So putting them in homes gets them off the streets and gets them, you know, to where they're not begging. They're putting themselves in a shitty home so that, you know, not shitty person, but, uh, uh, they'll take care of each other. That house will take care of the homeless person, the homeless person will take care of that house. And whatever, sign the fucking liability, give them a goddamn waiver and sign the liability away. So there's ways we could do this. There's ways that we could do it. So she was pushing hard on using abandoned buildings, which Janet Wilson should be city councilwoman. I mean, her ideas, you know, was, were incredible. That's time. He's a likable person. He's approachable. You could go talk to him. His great grandparents immigrated with the Irish. So my great grandparents were Germans. So the, the Irish were, they were kind of rough around the edges. The Irish were always wanting to fight and they were drinking all the time. So, you know, he's Irish, so, you know, we should give him a little bit of wiggle room there. Give him a little bit of leeway. So his grandfather worked for the steel mill. He was in the army medic for three years. He's been in the car business. He's a local, went to, fourth generation Puebloan, went to Central High School near Bessemer, grew up in Bessemer. So I don't, his loyalty is where his home's at now, but I bet you that he's got a love for Bessemer. And, uh, he studied religion at Liberty University, so we gotta look at that. But Mark Aliff stood in splendid isolation on many issues. He stood up against these issues, which it seemed inevitable and he was-
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Batteries.
So, um, there's that. Um, you know, and I also have vision, uh, to convert Pueblo into a one hundred percent wifi zone. Uh, there's existing infrastructure that's already here that-
We have fiber optics apparently like to die for.
Yeah.
Fiber optics, I found out.
Yes, we do. So, um, I, I feel that that's, uh, that's also something that I'm running on is, is working to see us convert to that. And, and I think that would, uh, that would just elevate our, uh, our identity and, and our credibility. And, uh, we can bring more tech jobs, right? We had mentioned the-
Yes.
-the workspace. Um, you know, let's bring some, let's have a workspace for, for the, the tech industry.
He would work on getting a consensus. So Mark Aliff conservatism, yeah, he's a Republican and I'm not. I am on the left. Full disclosure, I am more of a lefty than a righty. Now, uh, his homelessness is like Noraki, let's find a building and put them in there. And, uh, he also believes in contour crafting for locals, for worthy locals and for the children. So he believes in building cheap housing, affordable or cheap or free housing for the homeless. It's a crisis. It's a public health crisis. We need to get homelessness fixed right away, immediately. So we need to have one conservative on the board too. If it's not Michael Stapleton, Michael Stapleton, he seems to be more defined, uh, than Mark Aliff, but Mark Aliff has a lot of progressive ideas and to progress, to move forward, there's a lot of-
That's probably not realistic, but you would, you know, wanna strive for it.
But if we had the schools engaging kids in a, in a positive way, I don't know how they wouldn't want to be there.
And I think that, I'm, I'm sorry, Jen, I, I just wanna say that. I think that schools need to evolve along with, with, with the, the times and-
The fact that all the Democrats are conservative around here, right? Hillary almost won, Donald Trump had beat Hillary here, but only by three hundred and ninety votes. Very few people voted for Jill Stein or Gary Johnson. Clearly, but the two better candidates than those other two pieces of shit. So Mark Aliff is a Republican. And if there is a democratic establishment here, well, you need to learn about democracy. You need to be more democratic. You need to give a shit about the poor and the working class and the unions. You need to give a shit. Quit, you know, with the one percent and cozy enough with the goddamn corporatist establishment. So he's an outsider. He's a Republican, yet he's an outsider. And that also gives, you know, I trust him because of that. And I also, I think he might give a damn. So he's an outsider who gives a damn. So I, I like Mark Aliff.
So where, where are the funds going, kind of thing?
I do believe in more transparency in, in this issue particularly. I know that the recreational cannabis is taxed at a much higher rate. And, but again, you know, you know, do we really know exactly where that, where those funds are, are going?
I saw an article that they gave some to scholarships, uh, recently and, uh, and that-
Might be a character flaw, but I like Mark Aliff. He's got a lot of progressive ideas. And there are Republican progressive, progressives throughout history. Teddy Roosevelt was a progressive Republican. Abraham Lincoln was a progressive Republican. The people who actually, the Pueblo chieftain at one time was, uh, the, uh, progressive Republicans. They're the ones that got the charter. The first charter of nineteen eleven happened because of progressive Republicans. That's how we got a home rule city. That's how we got our independence. That's how we got our autonomy. That's how we got our sovereignty. Our autonomy and our sovereignty are hanging in the balance right now. Mark Aliff is opposed to the strong mayor and I filed an injunction, so if it passes, I'm gonna be politically relevant. And I haven't got the answer. They haven't responded yet. So I think they're waiting till after the election to see what happens.
Yes, effective education.
Right, right.
Is there anything else that you wanna let the public know about you?
Yeah, I guess just, you know, just a couple of things. Uh, well, for one, I, I, I love my community. I love Pueblo. I've been here most of my life. You know, I, uh, I'm kind of the, I, I could have moved far out, you know, and, and started a life somewhere else, but, um, I, I really believe in, in, in our community and I wanna see us be, uh, successful in the future and-
That's good, but if we put more of that money into the school system?
Denver's grown at a, at a, at a substantial rate and a lot of them are millennials, young people. Well, we need to give them or give some millennials a reason to, to look at the, at the prices in Denver of what the cost of living and to look at Pueblo as a viable option and have them come down to Pueblo. And whether we like it or not, oftentimes students, particularly, you know, younger, they, they don't remember what a rotary phone is. You know, they, all they know is, is the culture we live in now of technology and instant information gratification, your cell phones, your tablets, you know, that kind of thing. And, and attain long-term sustainability, uh, socially and economically. I'm excited about, uh, the green job industry.
Yes.
I, I think the Pueblo, uh, I think if there's one industry that could really flourish in Pueblo in the next ten to twenty years, I think that the green job industry, uh, we should really try to, uh-
I didn't ask you about Black Hills and your position on that because there was a recent, uh, city council meeting.
They're just trying to make, make, make a living for themselves. They're contributing to our, our community and, and our economy here. But it's, it's the, the model that comes from, uh, from, from the top that, uh, I'm sure was calculated. They identified Pueblo, um, as a, as a, a market that they could probably, um, overcharge so that they can-
Poorest of-
Right, exactly.
Think more about the future than the past.
Yeah, absolutely. And we gotta look towards the future. We gotta find those creative ways to, to reach students on a level where they're gonna, they're gonna feel engaged and, and take, uh, take ownership in, in their own, uh, success. And I believe in the public school system. I believe that it's a valuable tool to help students not only, uh, be prepared to enter the real world or, or that should be the, that should be the, the goal. Um, but it also helps students, uh, learn social skills, you're, you know, or sometimes in, in difficult ways. You know, I, I had a difficult-
Difficult way.
I had a difficult time in middle school particularly. Um, but I think it, but for me, it, it, being around people, whether I like them or not, it helped me realize I, there's more people out there in the world than, than just me and I'm gonna be, if I'm gonna be successful in life, I have to be able to at least know how to, uh, you know, work with, with others, whether we get along or not. So I definitely am a, I, I support this, the public school system, um, first and foremost.
So because with the charter schools, does that give people with money an opportunity to get a better education? Do people pull their kids out of, uh, public school and put them in a private school because it's lacking? Good, maybe get some other, uh, folks involved too in the next elections and the ones after. We need some women. Where are all the women?
Absolutely.
It's kind of frightening. See if I can do another whole show on that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a, a great show. And I'm sure, uh, Representative Danae Escar would be a wonderful guest to have.
Yeah.
I know she's involved with, uh, encouraging and, and helping, uh, qualified women run for office.
Is she? Okay. Okay, well then I need to get her on the radio and find out where are these young women? Step up, if you're out there.
Yeah.
So do you, younger women?
We need good female leadership here in Pueblo.
Get out there, yes.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks you, Jason.
All right, thank you.
I wondered that for a long time. I'm like, why isn't this a techie town? It's perfect. We've got the grid, the infrastructure. We've got low housing. Uh, I mean, you could have picked up the property, any of these abandoned ones.
And if we can move to a hundred percent uh, wifi zone, we would, that would be a great first step in the, in the right direction.
Yeah. Oh, it's great. Yeah, they have to think more about the future than looking back.
But aside from that, um, I am uh, you know, I, I was educated here in Pueblo, graduated from Central High School, uh, graduated from-
That might be a good start. If we put the money into making rec centers, that'd be a good start.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, I think it's a, it's a matter of, of getting uh, creative and finding out the best ways to, 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 to put our, our tax dollars to, to work. And, you know, being responsible with, with, with any substance, you know, illegal substance, of course. Uh, you know, you gotta be responsible and you gotta be educated. And uh, there's a reason why you have to be twenty-one to consume uh, either of them. Uh, because we as a, as a, as a whole have decided that, you know, you, you, young people are developing. They're physically, you know, you're physically, you're developing and you need a great, hit a certain age before you can start taking different types of intoxicants.
And I think that's the issue that people have is that kids are getting the stuff. Kids have always gotten it. When I grew up, you know, it was alcohol, you know, you're sneaking into your, but it's exciting to see the young people participating this year. It gives me hope.
Yeah.
You know, because like I say, unless the people that are younger uh, get involved, then the young will still wanna leave. You know, we don't need to be known as the old people's cold town anymore. We need to be known as a vibrant young city that's got so much potential. And I'm hoping that this is the year it changes, so.
Yeah. Well, like I said, we're on that cusp and we just gotta move, do what we can and move forward.
Yeah, where they were talking about whether they were gonna continue with Black Hills. Do you have anything to say on the subject?
Well, I think it's uh, I'm glad city, city council has finally decided to uh, look at taking the off ramp. Um, ratepayers have been uh, just, what's a nice word I can use?
Complaining for years.
Complaining for years.
But they've been, yeah, ravished by the monopoly.
Well, and that's just, I mean, in my opinion, it's, it's corporate greed. It's coming from uh, Black Hills. Uh, you know, they're an out-of-state company. They're uh, they, they set their rates from their corporate offices, you know? The, the, the men and women who live here locally, who work for Black Hills, I, I have no gripe with them, certainly. But uh, yeah, but you know, I, I just, you know, I, I, I'm doing this, you know, because uh, we need new leadership and uh, we need to find uh, find a, a voice who, you know, who will listen and, and be a good uh, liaison to other entities in the community to, to find real world results uh, that, that can have positive outcomes for, for Pueblo.
Good. Well, thank you, Jason. Thanks for coming by.
Absolutely happy to be-
Good luck in the, in the ren.
CSU Pueblo, uh, years back, I was the, I was the mascot for the football game, our first football game back in town. Yeah, I was a woofy. Uh, so I know how to be a champion and a cheerleader for Pueblo. Um, and my education from CSU Pueblo is in uh, public relations and advertising. So um, I, I really would know how to uh, be a good uh, communicator on, on, on all of the, the, the qualities that Pueblo has to-
We need somebody to stop Pueblo, really. We need some, uh, people proactively advocating for the city people.
So um, I absolutely uh, uh, wanna resist any, any efforts for them to, to raise any more rates. Um, I, I know it's highly expensive, uh, but I think where there's a will, there's a way. And I would like to see uh, Pueblo uh, create our own utilities. Um, I think that would be best. Um, I would like to see station five and six uh, be converted into uh, a battery house. If we're going a hundred percent clean energy is our goal, uh, we're gonna, you know, and, and solar is one of the largest uh, providers of that here locally. Uh, we're gonna need batteries. And what better of a position than uh, five and six, which is already central to the grid?
I, isn't it great? And why do we want to keep taking buildings down instead of repurposing them?
Exactly.
Then what, what's your feeling on charter schools, the private schools? Do you have an opinion on where?
Uh, you know, generally, and I'm sure there's some really good charter schools out there. Um, I think that uh, we need to look at how they're being funded. Uh, uh, you know, how much taxpayer dollars are, are going to, to charter schools and-